Couple of other items I want to bring to your attention. The fund balance was, that's coming up later in the agenda, but I just wanted to mention to you that the balance is working firm by the auditor. Second thing I wanted to mention would be the turnover allowance. You have something in your packet that gives you a little bit of a breakdown on the turnover allowance for nobody to get that we have net debt from 1,000,000. Hold on.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Markcott?
Lisa, it's not really for you, but it was in the pupil personnel director's report, but I don't see her here. But maybe you can verify the number. On the third page on the appendix of her report, she wrote that she has 19 students out of district and the total spent year-to-date plus the encumbrances is 1,115,766. And is that, is that what she anticipates at this point in time, actual spending? I mean, if we don't get new students, so then there should be a substantial savings in that line item. Over budgeted a couple of hundred, maybe?
I don't really want to speak for her.
Okay. Well, I know we budgeted, I thought you budgeted 1,301. So, okay.
Whatever.
And I understand that's contingent on, we don't have any kids moving in and need replacement and all of that, but it looks to me like there's a big push in there.
Mike, as you know, it's December and we're stopped with an adopted budget and where we're at now. I think her appendix really has come to fine tune it, and I think you're right. It's way too early to say where we'll end up. It's nice that we're at this point, it's better than reporting that we're looking at something in the red, so it's nice and I guess we can just cross off things because it is volatile. We don't know when we're going to move in. That's where we're at now.
Any other questions for Mrs. Markcott?
The, I don't know if it's on the agenda later, but I'll ask now. The reconciliation of exactly where we're at year-to-date, you'll be giving us in January, correct?
No, we will be giving you a projection. I don't like the word reconciliation because our budget is reconciled, it isn't balanced. We will give you a projection.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Did we get the bill from the Winston School yet?
We did.
Is it over or under?
It is under.
I thought so. About 50? Do you know how much under?
About 50.
Yeah, thanks. See, the committee did their math.
Any other questions for Mrs. Markcott?
Again, Mike, I just want to mention that they do bill us by minute of service for stuff like that.
Right.
So, you can take, they bill, they billing us this year by trimester, so we can take that bill and multiply it by three.
Right. But if you take the, if you take what the minutes for a student is and multiply it out, that's how you figure out what your year cost should be. So if nothing changes, that should be solid.
Right.
Okay.
Again, it's good news, Mike. I think it's still December. Still December.
Any other questions about the financial report? Thank you. Next item, our old business, this one year 16, operating capital budget standing item on the agenda. Number A, this particular year, 16, special education census and personnel budget, Mike?
Well, I guess, should we wait until she's here for the next meeting to discuss this all over here? I mean, I, I read the report that she gave us, the summary page, but it still doesn't answer the question that I had was, which is, you know, is the information that's on the RIDE website for this IEP census correct? Or was it erroneously entered? And I don't see that in a black and white answer in her letter. And I also had a question about the AIDS. So maybe we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting when she's here and somebody can get the answer to the question that I have about the AIDS, because, you know, we, I'm looking at the budget that we were given at the beginning of the year when the budget was proposed. And I count 25 AIDS, four and a half of them covered by grant funding on the original. Now we say we have 27 and a half AIDS. So what I'd like to know is out of the 27 and a half, how many of them are covered by the grant? Is it still only four and a half? So did we pick up the others in the local operating budget? Or are they covered by other grant monies? Because I read through the minutes of the October and September where the positions were added, but I really had a hard time figuring out exactly what was meant in those notes as far as, you know, was half of it covered in the grant? Or if somebody had a dual position, they were, you know, a .5, I forget what the terms were, but a .5 teacher assistant, a .5 something else, and then the notation afterwards said, you know, covered by grant. Was it the whole thing covered by grant or the second half of that position? So could you give us, like, I guess, I guess it'll be in your budget, when you give us the budget for next year, all the 27 and a half will be in there and it will note how many are in the grant. But did, do you know what, did we pick some up in the local budget? Or do we still only have 20 and a half in the local budget?
We were right in line with the budget for local this year.
So then the extras, we have more in the grant than the four and a half? Great, okay.
Now, Jim, just if I may, Mike, the answer to your first question about the census, I thought she answered in her initial paragraph in the memo to the school committee. It says, during the November meeting, us provided with RIDE census data from October 2014 as well as October 2015.
Right.
This data indicated a decrease in total enrollment of IEP students. As I stated then, census numbers are changing daily and are only as accurate as the data being entered. With that said, the total number of students is not the sole deciding factor determining the need for additional staff support. But I thought her memo was really well done.
Well, I didn't think it answered that question, Steve, because I know census changes from day to day, but I also don't think you have that big of a swing in the number of IEP kids from day to day. And, you know, usually if you get a new student in, kind of, it's funny, because when you're in guidance, it looks as though if I lose a top student this week, inevitably I'm going to get a new student who's a top student in a couple of weeks. And it kind of through the year balances out. But that was a big decrease at the elementary school. You know, a decrease of 12 IEP students, and that's the building where we had to get the extra AIDS because of the second grade. But I look at those numbers, a decrease of 12. So at that point in time, I guess, I'll qualify my question to her. In October, was that, were these numbers correct? But it just, that's, that's a very big swing.
Well, if you want to continue with the next meeting, Kim, but I really felt like she addressed it and it's going to change on a regular basis, the census, but, you know, one student with special needs just simply doesn't equate to another student with special needs. So I think that was what she was trying to explain in her memo. But whatever the pleasure of the committee is.
I wonder too, is it possible for the administrators in their administrative reports, I know at one point in time they used to put in the enrollment numbers in each monthly report that the administrators gave, so we could see how many kids were in each building.
We can give you that in your monthly report.
Yeah, if they could do that. And maybe she could do the same for the IEP number of students each month too, so we can see how it tracks up through the year.
So, Jerry, could you continue this on to the January agenda?
Sure.
Any other comments on number A? Okay, B, status of the most, of the particular year 16, operating budget, Mike?
I think we just postponed this because Lisa wasn't here last, at the last meeting, but I don't think there's anything to discuss about it until we get the record, I won't use the word reconciliation. What word do you like?
Forecast.
Forecast. When we get the forecast in January, and that goes for item C as well, because I was only going to do that if we had that information tonight, because I thought last month we said it was going to be December. So as long as we're getting it for January, we can wait another month for those. So we don't need to discuss C either.
Okay. Does anyone have any B or C? Can we move to D? Okay, fund balance items. Number one, use of the fund balance to address high school bond projects, Mike?
I'll combine mine with, if we could move Leanne's up too and discuss them as one topic of conversation. I think Leanne had, what numbers was Leanne? Number five and number six?
So you want to combine one, five, and six?
Yeah. And we'll just have a general discussion about.
They should all be D. We just combine them all.
Yeah, good, okay. Okay.
They're all the same.
Do I just combine all D?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, just the two of you? Okay, great.
It's all the same topic.
So if you want to go, you can go. Just, I said my piece of. I just wanted to, okay, well, she's looking for her paperwork. I'll point something out. I was, when we were at the meeting with the council, I was kind of surprised with some of the comments that were being made, because, and I suspected that, you know, we're, we're being asked, what, the request that's coming from the budget committee is that we use $1 million of the fund balance to address the locker room issues and the science lab issues. And those two, I don't think anybody was aware of it that night, in the bond itself, total of about $2 million, not $1 million. So we're being asked to use $1 million to apply to those two projects and address as much as we can with the $1 million of those two projects. And I think, you know, maybe there's a good chance of being able to do that, because I thought there was a discussion earlier in the, in the numbers that we used for the science labs, that had them relocating and everything, and I don't think that's the, is that still the plan that they relocate?
The lab.
Yeah.
They're not going to be relocated, they should be renovated.
Well, what was, what was displaced home economics in general classroom?
I think that had to do with something above the lab. I'd have to go back and look at the engineer notes in terms of the revamp, but I think it had something to do with utilities above the lab. I'll have to go back and check. Do you recall that?
No.
Laurie, do you recall that, the discussions with the consultants?
The exact specifics, no. I know they, they wanted to change the structure of the classroom walls for sizing.
Are you ready? Go ahead.
We had a joint meeting with the town council and we were asked to bring back to the school committee how we want to go forward using our fund surplus now that we, it has been finalized according to Ms. Markcott. The town council, they didn't take a vote, they are requesting another meeting, but we haven't been able to have a discussion as a school committee as far as what do we want to see going forward. There is approximately 1.4 million. Do we want to combine it and do some of the health and safety things that are needed? Do we want to look at the supplemental budget that we have? Are there things on there? We asked the administration to give us a recommendation, a prioritized recommendation as far as the needs that they have, but we just need to have a conversation. I don't know what we feel as a committee, where we want to go, how do we want to do this? We do have in our bylaws a policy about spending the fund balance. We have, or the minimum amount that needs to stay in the fund balance going forward. So if we have, I don't know, a boiler that needs to be replaced or a roof issue or something.
A rainy day fund.
A rainy day fund, but, you know, we don't like to call it that. But we have to keep a minimum amount in there according to our, our bylaws.
I've got a whole bunch of ideas, but let's ask Steve, you know, because he's, he's close to it. Steve, what would you do with the fund balance? You had your drones, what would you do?
He gave, you gave us a list, right?
Yeah, I mean, actually, Madam Chair, shall I continue?
Sure.
All right, so, so if I, if I'm understanding correctly, you've got some, you've got some different factors to consider. You're looking at some educational elements, you're looking at some health and safety related to the bond issue, and the other compelling issue is your, your current school can be fund balanced. If you were to throw this back at us to develop a plan, when I say us, the administrative team, my, my logic is that we would start with your fund balance policy. And so whatever you, it says that you need to maintain for your rainy day fund, or I would like to use the word contingency, that would, that would have to come off the top. And then you have your other two issues, which is the educational needs that we've been with love bringing forward month after month. But the other is really interesting, and that is health and safety issues related to your school, specifically, I guess you're saying tied into the bond.
Right.
If you're asking for us to do this, we would welcome the opportunity to come back with a potential draft plan for you all to, with love, cut up, criticize, feedback, revise. So, but that's, that can't be done in two days. And so to do it right, we would, if I may continue, I would love to be able to take this on and come back at your January 19th meeting with the draft plan. That way it assures that we have some time to do it right. One of the major components that we just talked about is if you're going to address capital improvements or that are related to health and safety, your major critical document is your five-year capital plan. That, that is essential. Right now, last year included, every element of the bond was there, and it had to. In order for your, to meet the RIDE criteria, it has to be reflected in the capital plan. Right now, Mr. Shaw is in the midst of updating that. He's basically dedicating a whole lot of time, sat with me, and I don't want to put him in the spot, but he'll have his first redraft of that. That's imperative that he brings that up to speed. And then, like I said, if you charge us to, to look at it, we would look at the capital plan, revised capital plan, your policy, and the educational needs, and we will come back to you with a draft. And then, like I said, have that one. That, that's, to me, but, but it can't be done in, in three days for the town council meeting on the 20th. We want to do it right.
Yeah. I don't even think we should be going to that council meeting on Monday night. I don't even think we should be going to the council meeting on Monday night. I think we can just convey a letter to them saying exactly what you just said. That we're, you know, we're willing to look at the issue, we're going to give the administrators time to develop a plan, we'll be reviewing it in January, we'll get back to you then. I, I think, you know, I don't even know if they really understood that they were actually asking us to give a response within three days. I think they, I don't, you know, I was kind of taken back by that.
Yeah, I, I only heard it secondhand, but that's the impression I got, Mike, that, that they were looking for something Monday night. And that, there have been things in the past that were done like that. We shouldn't perpetuate that. Let's do it right.
I think they would just, I think they were, they were postponing their vote until they got some type of feedback from us as to whether we were even open to the idea. I don't think they really expected a plan for Monday night though, do you, Jim?
I thought it was clear that we weren't going to have a plan.
Yeah.
It would be impossible. And when actually, I received the email from Sherry, I was, I was surprised.
Me too, yeah.
That they were trying to schedule it, so.
Yeah. I don't know if it might have been misunderstanding on the steps.
I think I got lost in the mix. One of the things that I really want to reiterate here though, and I said it at the meeting, they kept putting this out there as we use up to a million in the fund balance and take a million off the bond. We today do not know if we can do that, and I really want to stress that. Until we get an educational plan in place, until we get a project, a full project plan in place for the bond implementation, I can't tell you that if you take a hun, you know, if you take a million off and use it, that we're not going to need to draw that entire bond.
Right, I agree.
I don't think we're going to be in a place to tell you that, just based on what I know this evening, I guess, three months. I'm, I'm going to try to shorten that timeframe, but as of right now, it's going to take us three months to put together a full plan to implement that bond. And, you know, I think we need to make, my personal opinion is I think we need to make a decision as a school committee on what we want to do with some of that money. And, and I don't think we need to wait three months to do that. And I think it would be foolhardy to say that we're going to spend a certain portion now and expect that we don't have to pull that bond money. I think that's disingenuous to the taxpayers. I think it's disingenuous to the program that we're, you know, we're trying to run.
Legally, do they have any, I want to ask my legal question. Do they have any rights to tell us how to spend that money?
No. The statute is very clear that the surplus is school committee Monday, because it's tied in with state appropriation education, has to be used for educational purposes, and it's the function of this committee side.
I don't have any problem, you know, being open with them and telling them what we're doing, what we're planning on, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's tough for them to sit somewhere else and not see all these, you know, but that's just my opinion.
I don't think that telling is, I think that the council was at, was going to ask if we would consider doing it. And I think the budget committee asked the council to consider doing it. It's a consideration type thing, I don't think it's a, they're telling you to do this.
Yeah, I didn't take it as telling.
I didn't either, okay.
It, it wasn't an instruction, it was a, it was a request.
But I think, I, personally, I do support spending a good amount of the fund balance towards the bond issue, because I'm, I'm not a believer that when 2018 rolls around, anybody's going to have the taste of floating their bond. Well, you know, like, you know, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but when I read this letter and it says, you know, the town council's the vote to enable the school committee to utilize up to, you know what I mean? It looks almost like they're telling us, we want to do what we want to do.
Well, it's to authorize you to, to enable you to.
Yeah, I know, but they don't have a right to enable anything. You just told me legally. They have no right to tell us anything.
So, so the piece of that needs to be tied in, and that piece is the bond itself. The town council does hold the purse strings, purse strings on the bond. So if you go down that path and you say to them, thank you for the, you know, for the note, we're going to take your advice, you know, I think we really need to be clear in the message that we send back to them in that, you know, we may do health and safety items, but I think at some point we need to address the fact that, you know, we do not believe, well, not, you know, as a committee, but.
I'm not going to be their finance person for them, but, you know, when they ask the questions and they have $7 million of cash sitting every month, why don't they use some of that cash instead of floating it by? But I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to be the finance person.
How can you say you want to reserve 4% in our budget for the, for the rainy day fund and not, I mean, if you.
But they don't need $7 million, Mike, that's the problem. So why they have $7 million sitting there with nothing?
We're below the rating of any other community in the state. We're, we're, we're only like at 7%. They want you at 10%.
$7 million is, but what, 7% of what, the total budget?
Of the, of your operating budget.
But 80% of it is the school department. So the 20% that they're holding, $7 million, plus the two we have in ours, is $9 million. Seems like a lot of money just sitting around and not earning any interest. But I'm not a finance person for them. I don't know, I guess Bob is. You know what I mean? So, you know, I don't know if they're looking at all of their options, just my opinion.
May I? My takeaway from the meeting, I thought it was some positive dialogue. I think they were, you know, listening to them, they, the town council was actually asking us, I'm sure there were needs, other needs that we don't even know about that have nothing to do with health and safety, but the educational components. And they actually asked us, a couple of the town council members asked us. So I thought it was a positive, I, I didn't leave there thinking that, you know, they were beating up on the school or demanding or telling us we need to do this and we need to do that. I thought it was very open dialogue. They, some of them were even saying, if your money, spend it. And I think they, we need to bridge some gaps and we need to bridge some relationships in the town, and I really think that that's what these meetings are, are producing. I think it's healthy dialogue, it's a healthy conversation. I, I didn't feel threatened as far as school committee in any way, you know, do this or do that. They wanted to know that, you know, are there educational? So some of us did speak. I didn't give them the, the list that we have of the supplemental, but I did say, you know, we do have a supplemental budget. We did talk about some things that we really need to get in place. We talked a little bit about MIA, we talked a little bit about the phone books with love. We, you know, so they were open, they were receptive, they heard that, they were, I, I don't feel that they were asking for us to put $1 million aside, but that's where I think we need to have a conversation, you know, we've got to come to some, some type of, of resolution. How much do we want to put towards health and safety? What percentage wise? Do we want to put, you know, $500,000 towards this and $500,000 towards that and leave $400,000, you know, in our, in our fund balance? And a legal question I have is, do we have to maintain that fund balance constantly? Or if we anticipate in June that we may have some surplus? Can we, can we technically put, say, and this is just, I'm just throwing a number up, $200,000 in the fund balance to stay for our contingency? With the hopes that in June or July, when our budget closes, that we'll have another 200 that we could put in there, so we will still have $400,000, but it would give us more upfront now that we can spend? Or do we have to maintain that?
No, you can, you can do whatever you want, as long as it's educationally related. That's the trick.
But, but if our bylaw is saying we have to maintain a certain amount in our contingency fund, do we have to keep that in there at all times? Or can we?
You, you have, you have the authority to, you know, bypass that, or you just have to do it the right way, you know, and then, yeah, it depends on the situation.
Okay.
Yes, that's your question.
Attorney McAllister, in my chance, that, that's a guideline, and if the school committee, we would never recommend, in other words, it's up to you. It took us a while to even, like, years, many years where we weren't even close to the, what was it, 1.8%? And so it's, it's something you strive for, and so, you know, we're there. But it'll be up to you if you, if that's what you want to maintain, or if you, you know, once you look at all of, all the variables, if you want to say, well, let's keep 375, that, that's for discussion. But if, if you all vote to, to direct us to come back with a plan, then I would just want to make sure that, that we equivocate that to a draft, because we, you know, we understand when it comes back, it's, it's subject to your, like I said, with love, you know, cut ups, revisions, whatever, but it's a starting point, so.
So may I, may I ask a question? Sure. When you say a draft, are you saying a draft that we have to go through two readings?
Oh, no, there wouldn't be, I'm sorry.
Because it's not a policy, it's just a draft.
If you're going to request to develop an expenditure plan that works at those three, three variables.
Should we be giving him some guidance as to what people would support or wouldn't support, or how much of that money they would want to go to the bond versus, I'm just saying, come up with a plan and then, if, if, if people have a sense of how much they would like to offset the bond by, should we be giving him that guidance now so that?
So I, yeah, I think we should be giving some guidance. But again, you know, that offset the bond language scares the heck out of me, because I just, you can say it now, but, you know, from, from the perspective of the PBIC and being charged with implementing that bond, you know, our, our budget is 4.3 million. If we get up to a full plan and some of the things have been taken care of by the school committee already, are we going to, as a town, turn around and go, if you can't do it for $4 million, you're not doing it at all? I don't think we are. I think we're going to, we're going to look at the spend and do it as smart as we can. You know, and, and Roseanne Nato at the, at the, I don't want to say Mrs. Nato, because that happens all the time. Roseanne Nato at, at the town council meeting, you know, did agree with me at that point when I brought that point up, and, and she said the same thing, you know, hopefully, if there's things that are covered, hopefully we can pull those off. And, and we do save that bond money, but we can't.
Well, you float the whole bond and just draw it down as needed.
Of course, of course.
That's typically what most states.
And we, and that's what we would do, but the point I'm trying to make here is that we can't promise that if we spend a, a portion of that now.
Yes.
That the school committee is going to be able to look to the PBIC or the town council and say, don't draw the whole bond. You just, there's, you don't, first of all, A, we don't control the purse strings on that bond the town council does. So the town council can do whatever it wants at that point. So I don't, I don't know that putting a condition on how we spend our fund balance is the smartest thing to do right now, expecting that later on we'll make that up somewhere else. That's all, I, that's where I take issue with that. Ideally, would it be, yeah, perfect situation, we can do it that way. But I don't know that we should go into it with the expectation that if we do that as a school committee, that that's going to happen, because there's nothing binding on the other side of that.
Mr. Bassett, would it be better then for us to say, we're just going to do this as health and safety, and if it saves money on the bond side, great. If the bond habitus flouritum.
Yeah, that's, that's really, that's really my point, yeah.
Then, then let's redirect it to that, not to save money on the bonds, but the things that are listed as health and safety in the bond, for now, we're going to set aside a certain amount of money. I would personally say a half a million and try to do that revolving fund, so we could try to get a quick reimbursement from RIDE, but, and again, I stand corrected on the reimbursement. It is, I think about 40%. Whereas I was saying to you, because Providence is 80, so I, I did not say that correctly. But the other thing, I don't know, so I don't know if we want to do the half a million or if we want to talk about a million or whatever that may be, but I also. talk about a million, or whatever that may be, but I also would like the superintendent, I know he's going to do that, is come back with maybe some more immediate needs, like the technology, like, I don't know, the books. I know that there was some, you know, crowding in the bathrooms that need to be done. I mean, $10,000, let's get them, let's do it.
But I think...
The list and fund due substantially pared down, gets prioritized on purpose.
Okay.
We took some of those things out. But I don't want to interrupt the discussion because I, I think...
Yeah, there is a list in the background, I'm sorry. So I would agree with Mr. Ball is, is that we, we address what we can address now. I would suggest that if, I would even go so far as to suggest that we don't need to take any action tonight on putting money aside, hasn't Sarah left? We need to decide how we want to address the, need to be addressed under health and safety. I think we have it coming up later on the agenda, you know, more details. To correct you, I have gotten clarification on reimbursement, 34%. There's some situations where if it's energy improvement and some other, there's some other caveats here that you may be eligible for up to 38 and additional 4%, but the firm number for us is 34%. So, you know, it's, it's not as much as, it's a great, great number, but it's certainly not, you know, as much as a lot of people were throwing around in the town council.
I see. If I may, just to clarify that these are for one-time expenses, these are not for salaries and things like that. And two, I think it might be beneficial for the administration, you can give them a little bit of a ballpark because we're asking them to come back with a, with a plan and have a priority of things. And we do have a priority list in front of us, but perhaps there may be more money that we're willing to put towards educational things versus health and safety. I mean, they're both important. We want our kids to be safe and our staff to be safe, but we also have educational needs that need to be met as well. So just to give them a little, and correct me, Mr. Lindberg, I don't know if that would be helpful to you or not as far as, how much, how much are we asking you to look at for health and safety things? And how much are we asking you to look at as far as needs that you've been asked? And if it doesn't matter, then okay, but...
Since I, since I got a window of where this was going a while back, obviously, my, my thoughts and mine's been turning, but if you all decide to say this amount towards health and safety, that's fine, but you can be guaranteed we'll be coming back with a plan that won't all be skewed towards educational needs. It'll definitely be, it'll definitely look toward rest, health and safety. And that's all I can, all I can say. But if you, if you want to say, you know, superintendent, keep this money aside for health and safety, then that's what we work with when we begin to look at the revised capital plan. Either way, whatever we give back to you is subject to your, you want to change anyway. So if we came back with a, a plan strictly hypothetical, strictly hypothetical, it's on the camera, where, where 300,000 or 400,000 was dedicated to health and safety and that was itemized, and you wanted to change it to 500 or introduce it, other items, you're going to have all the background and backup from your capital plan. So you're going to be able to see what we recommend. But it doesn't mean you can't say, oh, let's take that one away and let's move that in. So in the end, it's still your, going to be your plan. So whatever you want to do.
I keep hearing two versions of health and safety, though. Health, I hear health and safety that's included in the bond and then just health and safety. So is the focus going to be on health and safety that's addressed in the bond?
I think that's entirely up to us. I think we have a litany of items that are not listed in the bond, that would fall under health and safety and therefore be RIDE reimbursable. And I think it's up to us as a school committee to sort out what we want to address. I don't think we should just be addressing the information that's in the bond. I think we need to address the entire, you know, the entire needs and not just, again, I think it's short sighted to look as, as if we're just going to take money out of the bond or save money for the bond. I think we need to decide what we want to do with, you know, a lot of these capital requests that, you know, we've kind of kicked to the curb for almost a year now.
Mike, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to Art's point, when you get your draft of the capital plan, any item that we believe related to health and safety will be designated within H1S. So what we intend to do, even as we develop a plan, as soon as Mr. Shaw's done with the first draft of the capital plan, which is critical, because, you know, I think Art will speak to that later, it's really critical. You'll see, kind of in live time, what we're looking at is we develop our plan. So you'll have that first draft. Because at some point, you all have to vote on that capital plan, not to fund it versus support it. So I don't mean to ramble, but those, every, every item related to health and safety, we will designate in the capital plan. And in there, out of money, I just, I don't know if I'm making any sense here. May I?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Mr. McAllister said we don't have to make an efficient motion, that it's just something that you've agreed to do for the January meeting?
Absolutely, yeah. And if it, if it, if we can get it done sooner and get it to you on a Friday package, we will. But it is kind of a unique time of the year, and so we don't want to really lean on my team too much. I'd like to see them take a little break and then we'll get back to work and roll up our sleeves. We've already started, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments about those items? Did we, we agree to group five and, and, or five and six? I have a question about 6A. Was that yours, Mr. Lindberg, about the, the opinion from Mr. Abbott about the technology purchase affecting the maintenance of effort?
Yes, actually, six, I believe six was mine and six A. We wanted to make sure we provided the information back. That has an impact. Madam Chair, can I just...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so it may be unfair for me to project the implications of this, but I'm going to. My sense is that as a result of the opinion letter from RIDE, that, that the town will no longer fund technology purchases because it would impact the maintenance of effort base. And so, and it is what it is. And so, therefore, something that you all have to consider, or we have to consider, is therefore, as we go forward, technology needs to be a staple in, in somewhere in the budget process, either in the operation or, or if we, if we use to kick the can down the road for a few years, then from your fund balance. But at some point, it needs to be a regular, it needs to be regularly planned and funded because I think I'm preaching to the choir. You all know how much technology now has integrated into not just our operations, but the community learning. You know it's the future. And so we know that, we're projecting that, that the town council probably won't fund the $63,000 that was approved in their initial June meeting because the RIDE opinion says that that capital outlay is a reoccurring expense and therefore it goes into the maintenance of effort. It might be unfair for me to project that in the town council, maybe they won't fund it. But I do think a letter from the committee requesting their decision along with the opinion letter is appropriate because that's what they're waiting for. And so I think giving, give them a chance to definitively make that decision. I completely understand if it's a, if they're not going to, I get that. But I do suggest under that that, that the chair, the chair itself, craft a letter requesting their final decision and attacks the opinion letter because that's what they asked for. That being said, I think it's fair to, to kind of lean towards the fact that it's probably not going to be funded. That's why it's in the plan we brought forward tonight, it's 63, 622. So we've included that, working on the assumption it won't be funded.
I think it will be funded. I don't think there was a, I don't, I don't think, I don't think there was a big consensus that the maintenance of effort issue was that important to a $63,000 purchase. I think they wanted a ruling probably to address the situation that had occurred in Cumberland with a $1 million purchase. But 63,000 maintenance of effort is, you know, it's going to, you're going to get a $63,000 increase next year either in capital or your operating budget. You always get something from, from one or the other. So I don't think that's going to bog them down, and I think they would approve it. So it wasn't, not everybody had the opinion that it was that important.
Okay. So may I suggest to the committee then, if you, you think about sending a letter to request their consideration with the backup, and that way we can close the book on this one way or the other?
I think that's a great idea.
If you get the letter up soon, I'm going to the meeting Monday night for something else anyway, so I'll speak to it. I don't think there's going to be a problem. I'll be made.
Would you like to make a motion for a letter?
It would be to authorize the chair to, to send a letter on the spoken his behalf.
So moved.
Out of favor?
Aye.
I'm going to assume that there's, there's no action then on six.
I'd like to wait until, I think if we get the, the forecast from Lisa next month, I think we can address some of these purchases from, with the money that's in this year's operating budget. If we are going to be headed towards a surplus instead of letting it be as come a surplus, we should spend it now as part of the maintenance of effort of this year. I don't think there'll be any contentious feelings if we, you know, work off of this list with this year's operating budget funds that are available when we see what the number is. I mean, I don't say we should run out and spend the whole thing in the first month, but I think if you're looking at a $400,000 surplus, you might say, well, 100 or 200, we can go through it right away.
Just to unpack that a little bit, that may be a workable approach. I know, I know Lisa likes to be very conservative and wait till, like, for instance, April, because there's so many things in flux. But if you have a backup with your existing fund balance, do you follow me? You have a backup, you have that fallback. And so I think if we wait for Lisa's forecast, and that's something you all want to consider, I would just, and again, I love the phrase, with love, ask, one way or the other, if we can make a decision at the January meeting on this. Because it, there's going to be a, if you approve, there's going to be a time to, to place the order, get it in, get it in the kids' hands. And so, so...
To be, to be clear, we're just talking about the technology plan right now, right?
Yeah. Truthfully, there were two other items.
That's what I was, that's what I want to make sure we address.
That are, that are haunting me. Go ahead.
No, no, that's right. So, so I wanted to point out to the rest of the committee, you know, there's, there's a couple items on here, and I know they've been highlighted, I know they've been brought back to us several times. I know it's really unseasonably warm out, but if we wait till January, when we actually, like last year, have a foot of snow on the ground, under the facilities, there's a couple of items in there that I think we could probably agree to go forward with tonight to allow, you know, us to be prepared for the winter, whenever it does show up. Polysander and the hard cap.
You don't have to put seven in there.
Under the facilities. I know we've seen it several times. It's on the, at the bottom, it's highlighted.
It's 22,595?
That's the whole thing. And then the polysander is not to exceed 5,000, and the hard cap is 4969.
So it's in addition to the 22?
No, 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 that's...
No, that's, that's part of the 22,595.
So what do you, what is the polysander?
I'm suggesting that, you know, it's December, yeah.
But you're talking about the polysander and...
Yeah, yeah, those two. No, the, the total, they're being... Sure.
Mr. Bassett?
Yeah?
And may I also say, would it be possible for us to agree to authorize the technology purchases, but not address where the, so that they can order them? And either we're going to address them with current funding or reserve funding?
Which, what are you talking about?
The techno, the grade backups for the technology, yeah. Only so they can order the Chromebooks? So I know, I'm, I'm not trying to put everybody on the spot, but if we're ordering things because we have to get them in, and we're probably going to do this next meeting, we just have to figure out where the funding's coming from. I don't think anybody's against it.
I don't agree with number three.
Our attorney has his hand up, so I yield to him.
I'm just thinking aloud. We have to conform to the agenda as published in the open meetings law. And the way that topic is addressed is allocation of funds for purchase of technology. I thought the larger context of that was in the discussion of the surplus.
Yeah, right.
So if, if you, if you were to vote on that topic tonight, it would have to be a vote to take it from the surplus, which if I distributed correctly, you were kind of hedging the bet on that whether it would come from the surplus or from this operating budget.
Well, if you go to five, it's usually the fund balance. Now, fund balance can be surplus or it can be current fund balance.
Yeah, the technology's under six.
Educational needs of students.
If you want to make the motion, go ahead.
I wasn't talking about the class, I was talking about the Chromebooks. So, because we just had jumped back to the Chromebooks.
We did.
We did, right. And we already made a suggestion for a plan that gets brought forward since January.
So I'm comfortable going forward with the plan.
Me too.
I don't know that...
We don't? The plan for January.
I understand where you're going with it, but I don't know that it'll make all that much of a difference. And I'd rather get the answer back from the school committee, excuse me, from the town council.
No, I, I, I respect that. Are you going to go forward on the senior?
Well, that's, I'll, I'll support that if you do. Yeah, I'm not sure. We didn't write in, this was provided as backup. So this, this entire expenditure list was provided as backup. Can we take out a portion of it? Actually, as long as it comes from, I think we're...
I, I, like, I think it's got confusing because we jumped back between Chromebooks and these winter, $10,000 winter purchases. I, I don't think that, I think the agenda is clear enough that if you want to authorize the polysander and the hard cap, which I think is about $10,000.
And, and this, in addition to all of this, equals 22. So just the two items would be around that.
I wanted to take him up to speed. Can I, can I discuss where we are with the commissioner's decision? The commissioner made a ruling last year that Ben filed for and said that in a deficit situation, we didn't need the authority of anybody to spend the fund balance. And the, the, the opposing position is, and I advocate the opposing position is, that yes, that money is the schools' once they get it, and it's declared a surplus, and it's our money to spend the way we want. However, I still think you have to comply with all of the requirements of chapter, the title 16, and our town charter with regarding how you budget, and you have the capital purchases reviewed by the planning board, and it has to go before the town council for approval. That's all charter language.
But the charter is superseded by the state statute. In 16723, it's very clear that with the surplus funds, that no further authorization from the town council is required. Even if that contradicts the charter, that trumps the charter.
But the, the title 16 also says that it described the budget process, where you present your proposed expenditures for the year. And my argument is, and that's the argument that I've heard from the town solicitor in the past, is that if you spend, let's say the budget this year was 24 million, and we spent 24 million of the, of the appropriation from this year and an additional 500,000 from a fund balance, we're exceeding our appropriation because we didn't put it in as a budget, as, as a huge appropriation of fund balance and list the expenses in the budget.
I, I understand the argument, I just disagree.
Okay. But we, we ended up, we got a letter from the commissioner saying, no, you can spend it anytime regarding the deficit. And then Ben... spend it anytime regarding the deficit, and then Ben sent another letter two weeks ago saying, is that applied to every situation or only to a deficit? Because his ruling was specific to the deficit situation.
I understand that.
Okay, so we were supposedly waiting for...
Which is fine, we can wait, but my opinion tonight is that you don't need that, and until we get contrary, that's just the, my legal, and I know it's Ben's opinion as well, but obviously if, if the commissioner says something different, and I don't anticipate, by the way, that you're going to get any answer, maybe six months, because that's, he's running two jobs and that's how they're doing it, and so I think we need to at least consider acting, I hope we have to act on...
So what are you worried about, Mike? Is the commissioner going to come after us and sue us?
No, no, I don't want to get, I don't want, I want good relationship.
He's just wanting clarity about it.
Yeah, I understand, but what are we worried about? I know clarity, but we get clarity, but what is, what's somebody going to do if we get clarity? What if we don't get clarity? Who's going to come after us?
Nothing's going to come after us, except I want a good relationship with the council. If I want them to be involved and we had a written initial, initially at the joint meeting of the three boards, we had initially discussed drawing up a policy as, that, that everybody could live with, that the town could live with and the school committee could live with, about how and when we'd access those funds. And now that's, we're pushing the shine, we're running ahead and we're spending the fund, you know, the fund balance. That doesn't buy goodwill. I mean, we had, we, we...
Liam was just describing.
Mike, that goes back to the original point, that you, if you set a policy, you want everybody to vote on it, it takes you six months to buy anything, and sometimes you have needs, and you have to be flexible, and we have no flexibility. So if you, if you want to go down a path and get the blessing of the Pope, you know what I mean, then we do that, but then you, you can't buy anything, you become ivy and you can't, we can do that.
I think if you ask at the beginning of the year when you're submitting your budget, for what you do use your budget, your...
But if the polysander breaks in, in December, we need to buy another one.
You have money in your operating budget, you'll have to tap, we have, look, John, you just heard tonight...
I know, but you, you keep saying that, you can't go down a path with a perfect budget, there's no such thing.
There's probably a couple of hundred thousand in the special, and 15 in the, in the, the other.
I won't argue anymore, you've never done budgets, I won't argue anymore.
Okay.
Go back to teaching.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do want to bring it to you.
You know what, John, I don't have picked you or criticize you for not looking at the details.
You just did, but you keep going hopping on your point, and you want to hop on your point all night, you're always right.
Can we move on?
Is there any motion?
No.
So we need to address, I think we need to, regardless of the aforementioned discussion, I'd make a motion that we address the immediate need of a polysander not to exceed $5,000 as described in the, in the, let's see, expenditures, and a hard cab for the Kubota tractor not to exceed $4,969.
Where are you taking them?
From the fund balance.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Can some please?
Why don't we do a little...
You can do a discussion.
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion. I just didn't write the numbers down, so what is the total from...
So, so the total is 9,969.
So it's the 5,000 plus the 4969, is that what I'm looking at?
Correct, yeah.
Where are you going to get a scene, oh, that's the sand, okay.
Yeah.
So the other piece is the orbital?
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not considering the entire 22,000, we're considering the immediate need of...
So just page two bottom.
Page two bottom, exactly.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, before you vote, if it happens to be a positive vote, I'm going to assume that's authorization to, I think they're both off of state bid lists, and so we would move forward with that versus coming back again in January? Is that the understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Can we have a roll call then?
Certainly. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
No.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Motion passed as five.
Are there any other items that we skipped over on other dates? Or did you always...
Well, yeah, number three, the advisory opinion. I had, at the last meeting, we had said that Ben was going to send a letter to the commissioner and he was going to ask if it could be used in any circumstance, and he also said that if we had a particular question that we wanted addressed in the letter, that we could email, and I did email him the next day, and my thing is, again, I understand that the money is ours once we get it, my question is, how do you comply with the town charter and the state law as far, as far as following the budgeting process? And I sent him an email and asked him to ask this question, and it didn't get into the, it didn't get into the draft that he asked, it was a very, he just put ultimately, may a school district spend its very full surplus in the following year or any following year without first seeking reappropriation of that sum from its town council. And that isn't exactly what I had asked, I really wanted the question to be, do we still have to comply with the state law regarding how the budget process and the town charter requirements? I don't think, you know, I, so I wanted those two issues addressed and they weren't addressed, I was hoping Ben is here tonight so we could discuss it. He told me when I spoke to him about it that the question wasn't specific enough, but I, I know what, I still don't understand what he means by that, because I think it is very specific.
Do you want to continue, tell them again?
Let's leave it at that, we have the middle of the lay here with two weeks.
I think they're both the same.
They both say?
Well, I, I don't know exactly what the conversations, I know, I know Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Scundier did communicate about that, I don't know the detail of that. I do know he coordinated his original draft, which is the one that went out with, with the chair, she was, I certainly don't mean to speak for you, but I understand that at least what you wanted in the letter was included. That's all he told me, but I, again, I'm not the best one to go through the history of that letter. So I can confirm what Mr. Clifford said, that they did communicate about it and disagree it over whether the second question was appropriate.
I did approve the letter.
The minutes, the revised minutes that were passed out tonight, I have, we all got them when, before the meeting started, they handed out, they talked about what that topic, we saw it very quickly when the news started.
I mean, I've been using the word reappropriated, but what I meant by that was literally, and I don't care if you, they're not tied to a reappropriation, I'm just, my thing is, do you have to provide them details within the budget of how you're going to spend your surplus funds before you spend it? And that's what the question was that I want to pose. And I think, yeah, the commissioner might say, no, you don't need to reappropriate it because that's a technical term, but would the commissioner agree that you have to provide details before you spend it to comply with your local charter and the town council and the state laws? I don't know.
Can I ask a question, Mr. McAllister?
Yeah.
And, and it's also for, for Mr. Clifford. I, I'm confused, aren't you asking the same thing that we just went over on a prior item? As far as, do we have to go, does it have to be a capital thing we move before the town council before we spend our fund balance?
So if you look at all the sections of the charter that deal with budgeting and capital and, and just, you know, your, your plan of spending for the year, it all, it all suggests to me that you have to run that by all the ones that are supposed to be looking at it. Now, the expenditures we just made with the fund balance wasn't run by anybody, so my position is, you're not, you're bypassing the charter and you're also, you know, spending above your appropriation when you do this, and I don't think that's the norm in most districts, you know, see them all reaching into the fund balance when they have a $9,000 purchase.
But that's where I'm, I thought that the state law trumps charter.
I don't know if it trumps charter, it doesn't negate it's in the charter, does it?
It trumps the charter, and let me, let me explain that, and I, I got, I found the reference in the minutes too, but let me address the question. Federal law, federal statutes trumps state statute, state, stat, state law trumps local, so the charter is local law. In the ideal situation, and in fact in most situations, the best result is to be in harmony with all of those things. We strive to be in compliance with state law, strive to be in compliance with the town charter, that's what we all want to do, but sometimes it just isn't, it's a contradiction, and when there is, the higher authority trumps the, the, because, because the town is a subsidiary of the state.
Right.
So the town, I mean, the state is, the town is a subsidiary of the state, so state law trumps town. So our interpretation, Ben's interpretation, my interpretation of this statute, 16, 7, 23...